Hi Chris, hi Mike, hi Nick, hi Scott.
Hey Pete, how are you?
I'm good. Oh, you've got a new backdrop there.
Yes, we have, we have a photo collage up in the background. So Emily finally got tired of seeing the crack in my wall behind me for every meeting.
Very successful.
Yeah, so. I still have what my partner calls the hamster training course on the other side though. So I think it's actually a tie rack, but he says it looks like a hamster training course. This thing over here.
So the townwide master planning committee insisted or well asked that we have the virtual background of the logo at the public forum.
Okay.
And, and I, at the last minute was trying to figure out how to do that. Christine actually made a suggestion to me that worked. Thank you, Christine, although it was interesting because when I put the logo up on my virtual background, mine was reversed and so it was like a mirror image. At least I had something that looked close to right.
I assume somebody is selling very posh virtual backgrounds at the moment that you can buy.
The man who runs the bridal bookshop apparently is going around taking pictures of, of bookshelves so you can have whatever bookshelf you want to tell people that you're about.
Depends on how smart you want to look. He can give you a customized background of really thick, serious books.
Yeah, leather covered books from 300 years ago.
Oh, there's Mark.
Is Mark going to be on the actual Zoom or is he just calling in?
No, he's calling in.
Ah.
But he did his first Zoom the other day, so he could do it.
Oh, wow.
I know. He did a great job.
Looks like he's, looks like he's in Franklin from the number.
I'll rename him.
Yeah, it wasn't a particularly good experience either, so.
Oh, it was fine.
There we go, at least that's part of it. Let's see. Start video. There we go, all right, in business.
Just seven o'clock.
Work on my lighting here.
Chris, were you saying that we're ready to go?
I think you're ready to go. It's just seven o'clock now and we have everybody, so.
And we're, and we're good and we're online?
You're online.
Pursuant to the governor's, Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to assure that the public inadequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation and therefore will be a roll call votes. And welcome to the June 16, 2020, meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Medfield. We'll start with a moment of appreciation for our troops that are serving around the world. Thank you for that. We are disclosing that we are being video recording, everybody.
Correct.
And we have our first appointment, the moderator, Scott McDermott, to discuss the 2020 annual town meeting on the football field, June 27, 11 a.m.
All systems, all systems go, right? So, and Christine and her team, which has been very inclusive of the folks from the school department and from the Board of Health and from the, the town clerk's office and the deputy clerk, deputy moderator, excuse, excuse me, who Conrad, who's going to be addressing the logistics, everything out front that we'll have another meeting again next week to kind of review those logistics. So that part is in, in, in good position. I think the issue has to do with, you know, communicating now with the town. So I think everybody is, you know, after tonight's meeting, we'll have some, some real clarity on, on, on how we all envision things going a week from Saturday. And, you know, we would be communicating that to the town. I wrote my, my annual letter to the, as a part of the warrant report, I'm just going to kind of quote from it a little bit so that it kind of speaks to a couple of the issues and then I'm just going to recommend or whatever role I need to do in terms of the change of the quorum. But, you know, we will have a quorum requirement reduced from 250 voters down to 25 voters. We will limit our purpose and agenda to the essential legislative business of the town, including most specifically the budgets for the upcoming fiscal year and articles of financial consequence. I did, I went out on the limb and I said, we will have a historically brief town meeting. We'll be following guidelines that have been established by our Board of Health. I, I wrote that please, please consider your attendance. I mean, this is to all the, all the voters, all the residents as always welcome in quotes, but I did put perhaps not as necessary as I would normally declare as your moderator. I started off obviously in the past by saying that I would write a letter urging all of our Medfield voters to come and attend the annual town meeting. It's a, it's a proud heritage that we've established over three and a half centuries of direct and open self-government. We've embraced our role as the legislative body over time and, and people always appreciate the opportunity to gather together. So I don't want to be in the, as a moderator, I don't want to be discouraging anybody from attending the meeting, meeting. But if we have a reduced quorum and we have live television viewing opportunity coordinated through Medfield TV, my own preference would be that we would have, you know, a limited number of people that would come, which is, which is something that I don't know that we, that I certainly that I could speak to in terms of dictating, but what else did we say, Christine? You know, we look forward to, at the next appropriate time, following up on, on the annual town meeting, you know, as needed and, you know, if ready to, to pursuing our normal articles that we would address, the full range of them at, at a follow-on special time town meeting. So.
All of this, just to Scott, just we're putting all of this on our 2020 annual town meeting website. So all of the information is there now regarding logistics and guidance. Actually logistics and guidance, Scott and I are still working out, but all of the information related to the warrant, the actual business of town meeting has been posted to the website.
Yep, and we've got issues, there, there are postings that Christine has done about the rain date, you know, under what circumstances we would and how they would be notified if in fact, on the morning of the 27th, it was uncertain through Twitter, through the town's website, you know, we would, we would publicize the, the fact that the meeting, we needed to invoke the rain date and go to the following Monday night. So, you know, as, as I mentioned last week, when we were all together, I do favor the reduction of the quorum. I do appreciate very, very much the work of the selectmen and the warrant committee and the school committee and town boards and Christine and town administrative officials in, in working very hard to have a budget that we hope will be for the town's consideration and for the town's approval. That would be my objective would be to, to be able to do that with, you know, pretty much along the lines that has been discussed and has been recommended by the warrant committee and by the Board of Selectmen. So are there any, any questions on the, on the, on the town meeting? Just as a.
I would just ask anybody who is on the Zoom meeting who's attending, if you have a question to please put it in the Q and A box at the bottom.
That'd be great.
And just to follow up on what you're saying, Scott, the, the warrant has been pared down to just the budget items. People will get that in the mail and they'll see that there really is nothing exceedingly controversial on the annual town meeting this year.
No, hoping people feel that way and that they, that they know that this is a, has been a concerted collaborative, you know, effort by a lot of people to try to narrow the scope, do what we, we, you know, we need to do to provide for the continuity, you know, to continue, continue to play the role that the town meeting plays in the charter as the legislative branch of government in, in Medfield and then, and then move on through the summer and, you know, revisit what we need to revisit when at the appropriate time and for a special town.
It's just remarkable how much extra effort COVID has required all of us to make. And I thank you guys for all the effort you've made to change the annual town meeting for our town.
Who knows, maybe, maybe we'll like being outdoors so much that it'll become a feature of the future, you know, so you never, you never know. But it will be unique. We'll work very hard to make sure that it is conducted in, in a, in a safe fashion with, you know, real vigilance around all of the guidance that we've gotten from the Board of Health around like distancing, encouraging everyone to wear masks and again, to try to set it up in, in a fashion that people feel comfortable being there.
So we, I, I don't know, Pete, if you want to take comments now?
It looks to me like Mike was about to ask a question.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, you just came off of mute. That's.
Oh, yeah.
My Zoom prompts.
Yeah, no, I was going to say something, but I don't remember what it is now, so.
Gus, did you have any questions now or then Chris, why don't you go ahead with the comments, questions?
So we have a question that says we are scheduling a meeting on the Jewish Sabbath, and that does not allow certain families to attend and request whether or not we could hold it on Sunday or Monday.
I think the answer to that at this point is it's too late to make that change probably, isn't it? That's certainly not something that, that I thought about when we were scheduling it.
No, I apologize. It's, it's not something I had considered. I apologize for that.
Don't we have a fairly long lead-in times? We have to do the warrant 30 days before the annual town meeting so that we're, we're, I think we're locked in at the moment, aren't we, because of the timing?
You'll sign the warrant tonight, which sets the date, but the date's already been sent in the warrant report, which has already been set to print. The person commenting has said we've already have a rain date scheduled.
I think the reality is, and I'm, I'm sensitive to this, this consideration. I think the reality is that, I mean, this is a, a muddling through year of town meeting and that anytime we scheduled it, any way we scheduled it was going to impact other important dates or other important activities for, for people. I think we, I think we have been sensitive to this in the past and this has come up. People have suggested in the past that we switch town meeting from Mondays to Saturdays. You know, and this has been, that has been a consideration for why we wouldn't do that on a, on a permanent basis. And so I think, you know, I'm, I'm happy to have this discussion about moving it to the rain date. I think this date has been proposed for a while in the discussions of, of this here. And I think we're working around a lot of exceptionally unusual set of circumstances this year. And I don't know that we could have picked a date that would not have impacted some people more than others when we had to shift something so dramatically this year as opposed to years past.
And I think honestly, going back to the, the date consideration is because we were trying to get as close to June 30th as possible with the possibility of a rain date as well. So we were really budget focused on this, unfortunately.
Right, I think the issue with moving to the rain date is if that it rains on the rain date, you know, you're then out of June at that point and you'd have to have a secondary rain date.
Which would have to be the next night to get it done.
It would have to be the 30th.
On the 30th on that Tuesday night.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to apologize for my ignorance here, but my question is, is, is the point here that all Saturdays are a Sabbath and therefore all Saturdays are out or did we pick a, I get, if, if we picked a particularly important one, I just totally didn't realize it, but.
No, all, all Saturdays are the Sabbath. This is, this has, has come up in the discussions. I think Mark is probably familiar with as well. And people have suggested in the past that Monday nights are bad. Why don't we have them on a Saturday? This has been one of the reasons why we haven't had the permanent switch of the town meeting to the Saturday. And I don't know that we, with change in schedule this year, whether we had as much flexibility as we normally would.
Well, for sure, we tried to push this as far off as we could while still having a rain date. So without a doubt, that was a piece of it. I'm gonna, I will, I will suggest that with apologies for, for that, not having thought about that or not having recognized that, I'm going to suggest that we still move ahead with this date. And people can complain to me about that suggestion. Like as a practical matter though, I guess what we would be saying is we would never be able to have a meeting on a weekend because a Saturday is a Sabbath for some, Sunday is a Sabbath for others, and therefore we would be restricted to having meetings. And we certainly don't typically try to schedule them here. The whole point was to try to do it as late as possible at a time that we thought would be least intrusive to the most people that still left us with a rain date. So it's a little, it is a little late for us to try to change, change plans, but certainly I'll be more sensitive about this in the future without a doubt.
I believe that, I believe this chairman, that other communities on occasion for special elections and town meetings have had Saturday functions again as a matter of necessity.
Uh, yeah. At the very least, I'll confess, I didn't really think, I didn't think about it and I will now.
Yeah, I confess I didn't either and, and I apologize for the, not being more sensitive to that. I, I maybe of all people should recognize it because I'm the, the person who was running Medfield Day on the day that we were kicking it over to the Jewish holiday in September when, when the hurricane came and I, I quickly learned that that wouldn't work and we had to kick it over to a different day because of that. I think, I, I think that we're at a position where it's, it's, there's too much that's been set down that we can't change it at this point. And I don't know about moving to the rain date. I, I think that, I'm not sure that that would work at all, but I'm willing to, to have people convince me differently about that, but.
But I think if we, I think if we moved it, we'd have to move it to the Sunday so you'd still have the, the rain date for Monday. I think that's the.
I don't think you can have it on a Sunday because Massachusetts has residual.
Blue laws?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a common day of rest.
I, I would make one suggestion.
That's not even suspended, Mark, under all the various dictates related to COVID-19?
I would make one other, you know, obviously we're trying to come up with a reasonable response to the question, recognizing, I think we're all saying, I don't think we can just change it. The intention behind this particular meeting though, was to focus on those articles that were likely to be the least controversial, presented in the least controversial way. I would suspect that any one of the three of us, if, if there are any actual concerns of, of someone who can't make the meeting, that would like their, particularly if they can't make the meeting because we said at a time that you're not, you're basically precluded from going to the meeting, if there are concerns that you have about, you know, a particular article that's up for consideration, that if you were at that meeting, you would raise objections or points about, I certainly will, will commit to representing those concerns during the meeting, but I, I suspect you could send that message to any of the three of us, particularly in light of the fact that we picked a date that you can't make, that we would do our best to represent that viewpoint in the discussion of the article, even if, even if it's not our view. Is that, I'm committing myself to being willing to do that. even if it's not our view. Is that I'm committing myself to being willing to do that. I'm guessing the other Pete, Mike, you would you would be willing to make sure that voice gets heard in our deliberations during the meeting.
So I guess maybe we were a little tone deaf in terms of of setting the the date on on a on a Jewish Sabbath. But I I think practically, we're hoping that, as Scott said, that there's no so little of of issue in this town meeting that that we're basically not looking for a lot of attendance. So that hopefully there's there's really no foul from having made a mistake.
I will I will say, I think it was I was reading the the Medfield Press, I think. And I think it's the town of Sherborne, but it could be Dover, one or the other. They set their town meeting date like Monday at noon. And I was, you know, caught my attention because it was noon time on a weekday. But I'm wondering whether they they didn't do a better job of spotting that issue than we did.
Any more comments about the changing the date of the annual town meeting?
I think we have to take comments on the quorum change to P. Because that was the me we the date was the date was voted at whenever we voted for the date. But I think the the issue on the table tonight is the lowering of the quorum. And I believe that we're required to hold a hearing on that. So I think we have input on the the quorum change.
Are we gonna do the hearing on that at this point? I don't really see it on the agenda as to where we're doing that. Is that something you wanted to do now, Chris?
Yes, that was available at seven o'clock. We're gonna move the discussion to seven o'clock. We had advertised that we would discuss it at seven.
So Mark, it's a formal hearing, is it? Do we need to open the hearing then?
Not a formal hearing.
Okay.
Just needed to provide public notice.
So are there any questions or comments from my colleagues about the issue of lowering the quorum?
Just just to be clear for the group that's visiting or that's tuning in, our normal quorum is 250. We, at our last meeting, agreed that we would we would we would look at approving a reduced quorum of 10% of that. So what in case anybody's not clear on this, we're what's under discussion here is approving a quorum of 25 for this upcoming town meeting. And I had I did have one little minor question probably for Mark. When we approve this, I assume we're approving it as a specific change for this particular meeting, along with any rain date or continuation that might occur. This is not a policy change. It what I'm getting at is if we were to have a fall town meeting before the end of the emergency.
No, you're reducing it for the annual town meeting.
Just for the end, I mean.
For this annual town meeting.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? Do we have a motion then?
I move that we reduce the quorum at this year's annual town meeting from 250 to 25.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Chris, are there any comments on the on the chat or the quick Q and A that we need to respond to?
There are not at this time.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes. All right, we have it.
As a point of interest, I amongst all the information that is flooding into us these days, I noticed that that one of the alerts from one of the law firms pointed out that the usual town meeting quorum is 50 to 150 in most cities and towns. So we actually have a high quorum.
We have a very high quorum.
And there are some communities I indicated last week that have no quorum requirements at all, no minimum quorum.
All right. Thank you, Scott, for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for seeing everybody on the 27th.
Very good. Our our next item is Maurice Goulet requests the Board of Selectmen to approve the S E R S G contracts for paper DPW supplies and water and sewer treatment chemicals. This is part of the joint purchase agreement that Mo got us into when he came, I believe, Chris, is it?
It is. So actually, what we're doing is you're authorizing your authorizing the award, and then you'll authorize Mo to you'll accept the award and then authorize Mo to sign the contracts. If you remember, there are quite a few of them. So we give him that that job.
Okay. The only one that I knew anything about was the cost of arena paper.
I was surprised they go through 48 cases. It's like and it's all eight and a half by 11. I'm sitting there thinking for DPW, there must be some like eight and a half by 14s or, you know, super high. But well, it's all eight and a half by 11.
So that the paper is actually for for all of the town hall and the DPW.
And given that that's what it's for, I was surprised it was so little paper myself, Gus.
I had this picture of them taping it all together so they could get those big plots off those machines.
So do we have a motion to approve the contracts?
I would move that we approve the Sergy Cersei contracts for paper DPW supplies and water and treatment sewer treatment chemicals.
Okay, so Christine, to your comment, are we making two votes here? Or is it both approving, accepting and?
Yeah, if you can do two, if you can accept the the bid and then authorize Mo to sign the contracts when they come in.
All in a single all in a single motion.
That's how we did it last.
I will make that amendment to Mike's motion.
Okay, as amended, do
Second.
As this motion has amended, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Our next item is Sarah Posta requests the Board of Selectmen to sign the Housing Production Plan certification letter.
Actually, let me just promote Sarah real quick.
This is about the fact that the aura is it that the Legion site is getting us another two years of safe harbor?
Correct.
56 units.
Hi, Sarah. Did you get the draft in your package? Or do you need me to give you the background on it? And just go in a video?
We have a draft letter, Sarah, from that I that we're sending to the state.
Yep. So that was just ask them to confirm the two years of safe harbor, which would end May 8, 2022.
One point.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just one point of clarification. In order to get safe harbor right now, well, actually, after the sense, when does when right, like, we're in 2020, when right now, we need 21 units a year. When does the change kick in?
It kicks in when the census data is released. And it was it's supposed to, under the Constitution, that it's supposed to be released to the president by the end of the year, and then to the state shortly thereafter. But the canvassing has been delayed due to COVID. So I'm not really sure what the status is going to be. But we anticipated a bumping up to maybe 23 units of affordable housing per year for safe harbor after the 2020 census.
So if you have two years of sense, if if we get to, I'm just curious how this works. There's no issues on the on the letter. There's 56 units here. We have 21 units per year that we need to get safe harbor, which means we only would need 42 units under the pre 2020 census standard to get two years of safe harbor. I'm just curious about this. So if we had only had 42 units, and we have two years of safe harbor to 2022, is it because we got the safe harbor prior to the 2020 census, it's good for the two years?
Well, I can't answer that specifically in the way that the HCD Council would answer it. But since it's certifying that our 2016 Housing Production Plan is being implemented, I would hope that they would take that position on it. But, you know.
So that was I think we're covered. We're covered under either number, though.
Exactly. Oh, for sure. So that's that's why this is just an intellectual question for me. The other point is, if I followed correctly, so we're we're using 56 units to get to two years of safe harbor to take us out to 2022, when we only needed 42. But those extra 14 units would not count toward a third year of safe harbor. So it's just we overshot the 42 for the two years. That just gets chalked up. It contributes to our overall inventory. But when we get to 2020, May of 2022, we've got to have a plan for at least assume, yes, assumedly 23 units to get us another year, which probably gets us awfully close to every
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think that we'd still be looking for another 45 unit type of project to hopefully keep us on on track. So that's still what the Affordable Housing Trust and, you know, we're all keeping an open mind for.
Rose Bay was gonna get us.
I think the next target, Gus, is is more the 10% than it is the the next certification. I think people's about to mention with respect to Rose Bay. We would have gotten two years of safe harbor for that, but we would have been over 10%.
Right.
On that front. And so I think at this point, for the next year, we'll be looking for either another years of of safe harbor beginning in 2022, or, you know, a development that would take us over the take us over the 10% as well.
Okay. Good.
All right. And I just want to add one more thing, because I know that you didn't specifically ask this question. But since it came up, we were just talking about the census and this being a census year, I wanted to let you know that we our response are Metro Self Reporting Response Rate right now is about 83%. And that's without the door to door canvassing. And our 2010 overall response rate was 85%. So I'm hoping that we can keep it up and get even higher.
Trying to beat it.
Yeah.
So it's not the COVID lockdown where people didn't have anything better to do than just fill out their census form?
Whatever, guys, people do the day.
Do we know how our number, our 83% compares to other towns around us?
Um, yeah, it's actually around this region. It's pretty solid. There's a lot of higher numbers. But I was really surprised. I saw some figures from Cape Cod this weekend. And there were some towns that are still in the tea for their overall response rate. So I was pretty pretty happy. I was already happy with our number. But then I was extra happy.
Oh, good.
Having seen that.
So do we have? Do we need a vote on this, Chris?
Yeah, I would move I would move that we approve the letter and authorize Chairman Peterson to sign the letter to DHT CD requesting a housing production plan, safe harbor certification for two years.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Hi.
Mr. Markucci, I.
Thanks, Sarah.
Actually, while Sarah's here, can you just, we have one more thing for Sarah. Can you
To reappoint Sarah to the Town's Representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for a three year term.
I move that we reappoint Sarah as the Town's Representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a three year term.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy. Mr. Markucci, I. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you. I do love that group.
Bye, Sarah.
Okay, let me just promote Jean.
Our next appointment is with Jean Minio to discuss the Medfield State Hospital Chapel lease, potential vote to approve lease.
Christine, you might as well just just promote Massaro at the same time to save yourself some.
Bill is all set. I work today. We've got good language. Nope, he's all right. He's gonna prove me wrong in the Q and A, though.
Can I just ask a quick quick admin question? There was this, there was another DPW contract for Census USA.
We're gonna we're I'm sorry, I should have said, we're gonna hold that for this week.
Okay. Great.
Welcome, Jean. That doesn't look like Straw Hat Park, so.
You've been there lately.
Yes, it's getting good use these days. So thanks for having us back. It's been a couple of months since you last saw the lease. And I think we were very close at that point in time. I guess if there's any outstanding questions, we can talk about that. There was also some back and forth between Vicky and Mark this afternoon with two additions on section 15 and 16. I'm not sure if any of you have seen that, but we can walk you through it.
I didn't see the exchange today.
I couldn't I couldn't download the changes that Vicky sent to them for them. So I figure we could just talk about them live. But we can call them the Massaro amendments if anybody's interested.
One of them actually came back, had come back earlier from a few days ago from Jean. And that was the one on there's a there's a paragraph, I think it's 15, that says, if the building is totally destroyed by some kind of a casualty, it would void the lease. And she requested language that that provided an option to renegotiate at that point. And which you frankly would have the right to do anyway. But we just had a language that made it clear that the parties were free to do that if they wanted to. So that was one provision. The other one addressed the concern that that Bill raised back at the March hearing about whether or not this was subject to MIPA, the state review process. And we added language that made it clear that the tenants, namely, the the Cultural Alliance, would comply fully with all state statutes and regulatory preconstruction and during construction, specifically called out without limitation, MIPA, should it be applicable.
So I guess the issue was that if if whether MIPA could basically be bifurcated because depending on who which part of the parcel was being developed. And if MIPA is requiring the states requiring the MIPA review, then Cultural Alliance will do it? Is that what's we're hearing? Okay.
Right, yeah.
Right. And that was a sentence added into number fifth, section 15.
16, I think.
That one's 15. The destruction of the premises is 16.
I'm sorry. Okay, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
So I had one administrative question. This purely purely mechanical, section nine, middle of the sentence, go up five lines to the sentence that starts in, it says, the parties agree that this obligation shall not begin until the tenant begins undertaking work on the premises that. I'm not sure that are identified in the lease, or is it it's like a somehow another piece of the sentence got cut off.
I'm trying to pull it up. I don't have that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Section nine.
Awkwardly. Yep.
Just about the middle of the it's it's five lines up from the bottom.
I think I think the word that is supposed to be out of there. And there's a period should just end at premises.
Oh, okay.
That's what it seems like to me, too.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Is Vicky on this call, too?
Yes, Vicky's on.
Okay.
Then I had one other que I had one other question. It's actually in two places. But in section 10 on insurance, section 10B, it says, such policy shall name the landlord and tenant as insureds and have agreed upon limits for coverage, including injury and death to any one person for any one accident and or damage to property. And it only surprised me that the lease term, it says that it's agreed upon limits. But I'm not sure how the agreement on the limits is reached. My guess would be the town would look for limits that could possibly be higher than what the, you know, culture and arts group would want to have. The same question applies on
Actually.
Section 11.
Actually, the 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 Cultural Arts has potential higher potential liability than the town. The town is generally capped at by the Torque Claims Act at $100,000.
Okay.
Whereas as the debt cap doesn't apply to the or probably doesn't apply, I should say, to the art center. So they may have it in their interest to have higher limits anyway. And the way these policies work, there's there's like a significant premium at the to get the coverage in effect at some limit. And then, as you go to higher limits, it's not that much more at the, to get the coverage in effect at some limit, and then as you go to higher limits, it's not that much more money.
Yeah, no, I, I, I wasn't really worried about us getting into a fight, it was just I read the contract and said, that's kind of a weird contract term that says we'll agree to it, but doesn't say. So it got me into thinking about who has what incentives to go in which direction, and then I don't exactly know how you get the agreement. The same thing applied at the very bottom of section eleven, last sentence. Tenant agrees to procure and maintain general liability insurance with affirmative contractual liability coverage to secure its obligations contained in the section. And again, it didn't specify, I, I, probably what I'm doing, Mark, here is I'm
Contractual liability is a rider, it does, it's not in an amount, it basically recognizes the fact that you've assumed basically in writing that you're responsible, so it just, it goes with that.
All right, those were my questions.
Mike, did you have any questions about the lease?
I did not, I mean, I would just say that I noted that the arbitration provision is still in there, but it's just sort of a statement that we could agree to arbitration, which would be true whether the provision was in there or not, so I ordinarily wouldn't include something like that, because it's not, not really an enforceable term, but I have no, since it's not an enforceable term, I have no objection to including it, if people want to keep it in there, just to remind everyone that arbitration exists and parties are always free to agree to arbitration under it.
Mandatory arbitration provision.
In that you brought that up, Mike, the one thing I wasn't gonna bring up. So the part that you're talking about around arbitration is section eighteen, if you go to section thirteen B, that actually is mandatory arbitration for one specific circumstance, so six, so eighteen covers matters that are beyond the scope of the lease. Thirteen B basically says we will go and arbitrate if we can't get to an agreement to resolve a default.
Yeah, that should be a may, not a shall. Because I, I had just looked at the changes from last time, and so a reminder to myself not to just look at the changes, but that should be may, it should not be shall.
Vicky, you got that?
And also, if you continue, it does reference section eighteen, which is our may, but
That's true, but it's, it's, you know, it's just very confusing, it appears it's mandatory arbitration per a paragraph that provides it is not mandatory, so.
It's an inconsistency. So it should be may within thirty-two as well.
Wasn't picked up back when we, because we, the original arbitration provision, the standalone arbitration was mandatory, and we renegotiated that.
Okay, change can be made.
My one issue had to do with the, the, this was the first time that I saw the actual plan showing what we were leasing. And, and I, it just struck me that we're leasing the green space, the lawn, the big lawn in front of the Lee Chapel, and I guess I, I wasn't aware that we were leasing that, and I guess I just raised the question whether we should be.
And I guess I had always thought that was a piece of it.
Oh, I'd never seen a plan before this, so I wasn't aware.
I don't have a position on that, that's between you and the Cultural Alliance as to what the what the parameters are, the authorizing legislation did define it as the pro, land being, I don't have it exactly in front of me, but it, it it was an attempt to restrict the land beyond the infirmary, that was not supposed to be.
Surrounding area, and then it was up to define.
So the ambiguous term, but obviously somebody was concerned that it not go too far out, so.
Where, where did you see that plan? I, I'm not, like, I don't.
It's a separate attachment.
Okay, I must have, all right, I totally missed it. So, so winging it here in terms of reacting to Pete, Jean, when we, when we talked about the building, the issue around maintenance of the building was one thing that we were clear, obviously the Cultural Alliance would pick that up. There was a kind of, I think, an open-ended discussion about the boundaries of the grounds maintenance responsibilities that would rest with the lease. If this green space is included in the lease, I assume that means the ground maintenance also falls onto the Cultural Alliance, so they're, we're clear on that, okay.
Yes, because we'd like to be able to potentially program it or use it for activities and not have to negotiate that every time with somebody else, and we'd like to maintain it as that green open space.
If it's helpful, we can, we can have Nick share a screen, I think I sent a copy of the plan to Nick if you want to see it right now.
This was the one that, that was with Jean's email.
Yeah.
Yes. What's the parking, I don't want to stir things up, I know I was the one that pointed out that they needed parking in the first place. That's not exclusive, right, that's mutual?
Right, that would, we would, the expectation of for all the parking on the property per the master plan was that there'd be shared parking.
Yeah, when we had originally talked about it, the green space that was here was because they didn't, we didn't feel the need to have the Cultural Alliance come to ask permission to use the green space, as they do now every time they wanted to use, program activities.
I guess the, the contrary to that would be that if anybody else in town wanted to use that green space, then they'd have to ask the Cultural Alliance.
Right.
Well, you could sub, I, I hate to stir things up, but you could kind of subdivide it to show the, an area of exclusivity, which includes the two buildings and the land immediately abutting them, and then shows the green, the lawn, and the parking as shared areas.
I don't, I, how would that work as a shared?
In other words, it's non-exclusive. You have exclusive control of the two buildings and the land immediately abutting it, but the land farther out in the parking lot would be shared.
Who's gonna pay for that, then?
If there were two entities that wanted to use it, you'd have to set up some sort of a process to determine who has priority use. I think you'll find that it's cleaner to leave it as is.
Was just a suggestion.
Jean, on this plan, isn't there a building that's missing?
No, the clubhouse is shown, it's next to the parking lot at the top, it's directly north of the chapel.
I thought that building was square, that building looks rectangular.
It is square, what you're looking at is from a feasibility study of those two buildings for potential cultural use, excuse me, and in that plan, we'd also connect that to the dining halls behind it, so that's why you see a addition there. But that was a, this was a cleanest architectural kind of rendering of the property that I could provide.
You know, I, I, with apologies, somehow or another, I missed your email, Jean. So I'll have to apologize for that. I, the one thing I, if we're looking, what I'm worried about here is if we're designating this parking as for the Culture Center, what I'm looking at is how, how far into the other buildings that parking lot goes.
Go ahead.
Well, on a site where the master plan deliberately tried to minimize the amount of parking space, and the concern that I have from an overall developments, I, I hadn't contemplated handing parking lots over. You know, if that, if that horizontal line was set, was below all of the roads, and it was the land itself, that it was certainly with the Culture Center having access to the parking lot, that would be one thing, but locking up that much parking on a site that already has somewhat restricted parking has me worried from a development standpoint. At le, at least enough to where I kind of like the Development Committee, we're going to be meeting tomorrow night, but to let the Development Committee look at that and react to it, and I, and I do apologize for not having picked up on this, I, I was, I didn't, I just wasn't somehow I missed it and I didn't think to look for it.
I guess, I think that's a, a good idea, to have them give us their input, because we don't want to be shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of the development of the rest of the parcel.
Right.
Well, we do need, I mean, we need the parking if the rest of the development doesn't proceed for some other, for some reason, I think we're gonna have to come back to you for, just to lease that spot.
Well, what I was getting at is not having to lease it at all, it's just it would be parking that would be there that could be made available, but.
But it would have to be redone, so. As part of our project and raise the money for it, or we're gonna come back to you to redo it, for the town to redo it. If it's not part of our, the lease, we'll still need that support.
That parking lot is not there now.
It is there now.
It is?
It is, that parking lot exists today, and it's not expanded in this plan.
So I think I'm
I'm just not understanding the, I don't, I'm not remembering the plan then, from the onsite, from being there and looking at it.
So I, I'm, I'm fine with having the Development Committee look at this, but I think, I, I think the most we would do unless the Development Committee comes back and says, no, that's not gonna be a parking lot in the master plan, which I don't think that's true. As I think there just have to be a license back or an easement back that the Cultural Center will allow that parking lot to be used generally by other visitors to the site. If the idea you're concerned, Gus, is we're trying to minimize parking, and if this is sort of taking paved land out of circulation for everybody else. I, I think I'm more sensitive to, to Jean's concern, and I think is more likely that, that this will happen, you know, ahead of, or instead of, you know, some other kind of development. And they should go ahead and make plans to have a parking lot, I think the only issue is they have to share their parking lot, presumably they're not gonna have a sufficient number of full-time employees who are gonna be filling that parking lot every day for work. Maybe in Jean's imagination, their wildest dreams, that is the case, but I think the reality is they will use that for events when people are coming there, and that'll be the principal use of it, and that could probably be dealt with as a sort of a license back to the town, we leased them the land, they will be responsible for it. If they need to preserve it off for an event, they can do it, but that on an ordinary day, you're not gonna see, you know, people pull up on the grass someplace else to park while there's an empty parking lot with a fence around it saying, you can't come here unless you have a ticket to a Cultural Alliance event, so I would suggest that we, I don't know if we approve the lease with the changes that we've suggested, subject to review by the Development Committee, in which case we would suggest a license or something back, and then we wouldn't sign it until the Development Committee has weighed in, but if there's no issue, then Jean doesn't.
There's no issues on my end on the terms of the lease, it's all, I just, somehow or another, I missed this piece of it. Both in earlier conversations, and I certainly missed the email you sent, Jean, which undoubtedly is a failure on my part, not yours. But if I can, if I can run this by the Development Committee tomorrow night, then I'm happy to, I'm happy to approve the lease subject to that tonight, and then just get the feedback from the Development Committee tomorrow and come back.
Pretty significant, it's a pretty significant item. I, I, I think you either approve it or you hold off and and get it resolved, because it may well change the language in the lease itself, depending on what's.
How about this, then, since, since we, we meet every week now? If we bring this up to the Development Committee, and if there's no changes, then we can have the lease back on the agenda next week without the need for Jean or anybody to come back and approve it and sign it. If it turns out based on the input of the Development Committee that this is an issue, then we'll have to sort that out, but I, I think, Gus, I would look for the Development Committee to make a proposal to the, the Cultural Alliance to address the issue before it comes back to us, because obviously this has gone on for some period of time. I understand that, that, and you weren't focused on the exact layout of it. But just in the interest of not kind of putting this back into the hopper for another round of back and forth. Let's get this discrete issue resolved, and if it can be resolved, and back on the agenda next week, let's do that.
So just, and just so I'm clear, let's, let's say the Development Committee doesn't have a problem with this at all. Does that license, does that still call for a change in the, in the wording of the lease around the license issue that you just mentioned, Mike?
No, actually, the way it is now is included in the lease premises, because it references that diagram, and it gives them that property, that's basically. If you're going to do less than an outright leasing, if it's gonna be together with a right to use with others in common, something like that, or a license or something like that, that language has to be the lease has to be revised to reflect that.
But that would just be for parking, I think it would just be to say that, you know, it could be two sentences that any parking on the premises, whatever precise term you want to use, Mark, will be shared, public, open, what have you, and so.
Problem is, it's defining what's being leased to them by reference to the diagram without anything further.
No, I know, but if you, if you, that's what you're leasing to them, but then you're putting in the lease that for any parking on the premises, there's a license back to the town and the public for use of the parking lot. You wouldn't have, you're still leasing them the parking lot, they're still responsible for it, they still have to pave it, they've still gotta do what they're gonna do with it. They're just agreeing that the public can use that parking lot.
All right, that's, that's certainly at least one approach, yeah.
Simpler than, you know, leasing, you know, carving it out somehow and changing the leased property, I mean, I think it's in the interest of the town to not be responsible for that parking lot. And to have the Cultural Alliance be able to both develop the parking lot, use the parking lot, regardless of what happens around them. And we just, to Gus's concern, to the extent that these parking spots are factored into the publicly available parking in the overall development, whatever that's gonna be, we just have a license to factor that in.
All right, I mean, that's fine, assuming that the Alliance is okay with the fact that that's the way it would be, that they get the property, they have the parking lot, they have the responsibility to maintain, but the public, the town and the public have the right to use the parking lot on, on, on an as-needed basis.
Yeah, yeah, that's always been my understanding in, in terms of having, you know, through the master planning process, was that there would be shared parking throughout.
You, you weren't planning to put up a fence and a, a little, one of those arm things to collect about buck for everybody.
This is a community center to serve the public, right, so it's not about walling everybody out, it's about inviting everybody in.
It's not the start of your parking empire, Jean.
Get your tickets now. Um, I did want to just clarify, the larger lot that's shown on the north side, that's existing, those six, where those six cars are shown directly to the north of the chapel, does not exist today, that would be proposed as new.
Yeah, and I would just say for my part here, I mean, I, I'm fine with this is laid out, you know, and I'd be hesitant to kind of over-litigate this piece of the lease in anticipation of a hypothetical development in the future. I think as long as we have a license for public use of the parking, that should get us what we need from a development standpoint.
If the, if the, the Planning Committee is okay with that, then we just need that language inserted indicating that, Vicky, that there is that, will be that right to use the parking.
So unless there's a pressing need to get the lease done in the next week, my suggestion would be to have the Development Committee weigh in and then revisit the lease next week when we meet.
And I should have feedback from them tomorrow night, so it's not a, there's not a big delay here.
Well, if you get the results to Chris or to myself, we can then Well, if you get the results to Chris or to myself, we can then, uh, you know, work with Vicki on language if needed between now and next week, so we won't necessarily delay it.
And Gus, ask them about both the parking and the green space too.
Yeah, yeah, I'll ask about the whole thing. Yeah, I, I will. I'll ask the whole, about the whole plot.
So one, one other thing I just want to bring to everybody's attention, Jean and I have been talking about. Part of the legislation for this is that we need to complete a commercial appraisal. Um, I don't think that changes your vote and authorization to sign the lease next week. It's just for, as far as I'm concerned, it was just a box to check that we will report that we actually did an appraisal and reported to the state. Uh, but it won't affect your signing of the lease. We just, I'm sorry, the second part of that, that thought was, we haven't been able to do the appraisal because of COVID. The appraiser stopped going out to do projects, so that's in the works right now. So, sorry about that.
That's kind of odd because everybody else is at the Medfield State Hospital now.
That's why the appraisers don't want to go there, Pete, right? Nobody goes there anymore. It's too crowded.
So is, is there anything else that we need to do on this lease then tonight?
No, I can move it to the agenda for the 23rd.
Okay.
Apologies on that, Jean. I just, that one slipped by me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jean. Thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you.
So close.
So I'm looking at our agenda and we've got COVID status updates, operations. Anything on that, Chris?
Um, actually, I think while you have, um, you have the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee. Um, and I believe that Todd is actually at our meeting to talk about council contracts. So why don't we do that first?
Okay.
To keep anybody waiting who's here in person. So let me just promote Todd.
Medfield State Hospital Development Committee requests the Board of Selectment appoint Mead Talaran and Costa LLC as special counsel for the state hospital RFQ, RFP and land disposition process.
There we go. Yep, Todd is on.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Thanks for coming.
Sure thing.
Todd, did you hear that earlier conversation right in front of, you've been on for a while?
I heard, I heard the tail end and I wondered if you were going to get everyone materials in advance of 6:00 PM tomorrow evening, so they can.
Sitting here making sure I have the plot that we're talking about.
We'll send it along.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So if it would be helpful, I can give a little context on the, on the proposal to move forward with MTC.
Please.
Or Gus, would you, would you want to do that?
Nope, you do, Todd.
Okay, so really the, the genesis of this is that following the special town meeting vote and resumption of committee meetings, the committee was looking to add some resources, you know, really thought of as a consultant at that time to assist with the drafting of the request for qualifications and the request for proposals for developers. Uh, we had received a proposal from Kathy McCabe, probably in May or June of 2019, when she was also making a separate proposal to help on the zoning, but we hadn't really, you know, solicited for those services at that time. And we decided to go out in first part of March to, to look for a consultant and get multiple proposals and, and, you know, there were some planning consultants that were identified that we thought would be interested. There were some, there's a listserv posting, there's some other, you know, kind of industry resources that the procurement was set to, but unfortunately, uh, we did not get any bids back at that time. It probably didn't help that this was sort of the beginning of COVID, but you know, when kind of talking to some of the folks who we thought would make a proposal, it didn't. I mean, they basically were saying that the bar that we had said the procurement was pretty high, that they didn't, they had some experience, but not to the level that we had been seeking as a minimum. And so at that point, you know, the, the deadline lapsed and we were sort of took stock of what to do next. Uh, we reached out to a couple of consultants and law firms on Chappa's registry. We kind of collectively racked our brains of who else we could be talking to. And at one point, um, you know, Sarah recalled a presentation by Jay Towlerman at a conference that related to his work for the town of Easton on the shovel works project. And, you know, that led to another conversation where Sarah and I spoke to him together, really just about where we were in the development committee and, you know, kind of what the development committee was facing as, you know, next steps, trying to identify appropriate resources. And, you know, basically learned at that point that MTC itself, in addition to being town council to about 20 towns in Massachusetts, actually, you know, does this kind of work. Uh, primarily, uh, their partner, Adam Costa. And so we invited them to address the development committee, which they did. We asked them for some work samples and some references to talk about their experience. And, you know, following a series of discussions, probably now into the beginning of June, uh, the I'd say the conclusion of the development committee was that, you know, this firm has related experience, particularly as it relates to redevelopment projects, municipal redevelopment projects, and could help us in our efforts to get the RFQ written. Um, I think what you have in front of you talks more about special counsel, but I, I, I think it's fair to say, you know, the focus of the committee is on getting the RFQ written and in discussing scope with MTC, you know, there's seven or eight bullet points, all of which are really about writing the RFQ and the RFP, so. I think we understand we need legal support at some point. We don't necessarily see legal activity as in the near-term future for the committee. But we do believe that MTC can assist us with at least the RFQ and hopefully the RFP in, in an arrangement that is, you know, basically hourly, so we can commission work where we think we will benefit from it and we can, you know, sort of turn the meter off for activities that we don't think a, a law firm would be the right choice. And at the same time, be open to, you know, adding additional resources to the team going forward as we identify needs. How did I do, Gus?
Good job, Todd.
So I, um, you know, I've not, I've obviously met Jay and I've seen the presentations, but I've not worked with this firm before. So I don't know if this kind of comes across as, as legal work more than RFQ support, which is what it's intended to be, but I, I think that's sort of an important point in the context of, of tonight's discussion.
Just to supplement Todd's comments, the one thing I would say is Sarah got it, the, the references that Sarah got, they actually all came back as very stellar references. Speak, you know, looking at it from my standpoint, which was I was worried we were hiring a law firm and not a, a technical, you know, a, a, a company that would have the technical ability to help actually craft the RF, RFQ and the RFP. The thing that I took from the references that came in was the comments that came in from multiple towns about the flexibility and the expertise uh, that they, that the firm had. So I, I personally was a bit more comfortable that we weren't just hiring a law firm to do legal work. We were actually uh, hiring some lawyers who could actually help us craft those documents. So not sure if they can completely close a technical gap. Uh, but I didn't get the feeling that we were just looking at hiring, you know, a, a firm that was purely going to be able to deal with the legal documentation and not actually add value on the contract documentation side.
Jay Towlerman has, uh, come to town to lecture on 40B. I think Mark Sorrell recruited him to, to talk to the, the residents. He's, he was impressive on that topic. He's always seemed to know what he's up to whenever I've talked to him, certainly. So I think it would be a good choice.
So I think on, um, you know, in thinking about what kind of assistance we need here, I think I agree with you, Gus, that we don't really need legal assistance to, to any great degree. And I also agree with Todd. I think that, uh, this really, the, the scope in, in the client agreement is broader than what we need now. I don't think we need to appoint someone as special counsel for the entire disposition process. And, um, but it does sound like, and I'll defer to the judgment of the development committee, that this is the assistance you need to get the RFQ and the RFP out. Which while they require some measure of technical expertise, you know, also just kind of need people to actually write it. And be sensitive to the rules. I, I think that, um, you know, the, the, the principle, whatever amount of money we have to spend on professional fees, it, it seems like the bulk of that ought to be spent on someone with real estate expertise and development expertise. Uh, whether that's a broker, a consultant, an investment banker, or however, however they describe what they do. Somebody who can add value to the structure of the project, to understand the financing of the project, to understand where on the, on the, on the grounds buildings can go from an engineering and construction and aesthetic standpoint and assist the town that way. So I, I think it's, it's clear we need some help to kind of jumpstart this at this point with the RFQ and RFP. And so I'm comfortable with moving ahead with this. You know, I'm not that, you know, I, I don't agree with the, the full scope of the work within the, the client fee agreement. Um, I think the bullet points make sense because it's focused on this, this narrow issue upfront, which should be relatively short dollars to draft the RFQ and RFP. Um, I don't think that means we should stop looking for assistance from a real estate professional, whether that's a broker or a banker or a consultant or what have you, who can offer a more holistic picture. And I think as, obviously you'll get a lot of more experience with this firm and I'm familiar with them as well uh, from their work as, as municipal council. They do a lot of the similar, uh, work that Mark Sorrell does. And, you know, get a sense of them. Um, but I also think we should be clear that we're not necessarily committing to them, uh, throughout the disposition process, uh, as, as, as the, the legal needs we may have, um, once we have a clearer picture of what the actual development's going to be, what the proposed transaction is going to be, how, um, whichever developer or purchaser of the property, we come to prefer how they want to structure the transaction. We may well need, um, different legal support. But I'm, I'm in favor of doing this. Um, I don't have any concerns about them taking advantage of the way the scope is written. And, uh, trust that you all will, will manage it appropriately. And, and so it's limited to that, but I, I don't think they should be appointed as special counsel for the whole disposition process, but I'm happy to retain them to assist the committee in drafting the RFQ and drafting the RFP.
That's, that's the scope we've discussed. We haven't talked about what, what goes beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the way it's described in the agenda as, you know, special counsel for the RFQ, RFP and land disposition process, which sort of suggests. But I think the, you know, the client fee agreement is, is a little bit more precise in its drafting. And it's, as with any lawyer, the work they do is at the discretion of the town. But I would urge you and the committee to continue to seek out, obviously there was an interest in it so far, but seek out uh, real estate professional assistance, uh, because I think ultimately that's what we will most be in need of.
Right. And I, so I think this allows us to move forward as a committee with, uh, documents that will ultimately, you know, be, you know, be presented to the development community. I don't think anyone on the committee feels that, you know, we won't need additional resources of different types, including the kinds of things that Mike is describing. So I think it allows us to move forward without, in a way that we can control and allow us to understand better as we move forward, how we can augment the team, the services, uh, you know, as we get into additional phases of the effort.
Chris, did you want to vote on this or just the consensus of the board enough?
No, you need to, to vote to authorize the, sign the agreement.
All right.
Uh, you did have a, a comment, a question, I'm sorry, from Bill Masara regarding this, but I believe that you've all just answered it. So Bill, let me know if you don't think you got an answer. He was concerned that the broker interest investigation had not been completed yet.
Todd, you want to, do you want to address that? You want me to respond?
Well, I would say there are some on the committee that think that might be the route to go, or at least to do a procurement for a broker, but that isn't, that's, I would say there's not a consensus on that at this point in time. So opposed to continued exploration, but, um, you know, we don't see that as a precondition to trying to get documents drafted. We, we don't, some of us don't believe that a, a broker would, you know, would write an RFQ as opposed to create marketing materials and create, you know, interest in the project in other ways rather than, you know, procurement-style documents.
Todd, would it be fair to say that in the discussions we've had so far around trying to find a broker? Certainly at this early stage where we're in an RFQ process especially, there is no sale, there is no transaction. So the normal way that a broker might be compensated, that's not part of at least this front end of the transaction. Uh, so where it might be possible they will find a broker that is, is kind of a good partner, isn't necessarily just focused on extracting maximum economic value from the property. It's worth exploring that possibility because we do have members on the committee that feel there's potential to do that. And if there is, it might make this whole process a much cleaner, straightforward process from a town standpoint. Uh, but at this stage, in order to keep this going, it's probably not the, the, the entity that's going to help us get through this next stage of, of getting an RFQ out. Yeah, fair, Todd?
Yes, I think that's fair. Or certainly, you know, maybe to add to that, any work that's done in the short run with MTC is only going to benefit us if we decide to bring in a broker later. It's not going to be instead of.
Do we have a motion then to proceed?
I move that we authorize, are we authorizing Christine to sign this? Who are we authorized to sign this?
Sure.
I, I move that we approve the client fee agreement, uh, as requested. And authorize Christine Truett to sign on behalf of the town to retain Mead Tellerman and Costa to assist the development committee in the drafting of an RFQ and RFP.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, well, thank you all very much.
I'm supposed to remind everybody that you're looking for new members on the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee.
Yes, with real estate experience, strongly desired. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Chris, I think our next item is the COVID-19 status update operations. Is there anything on that?
Yes, actually I have quite a few things tonight. Um, one, as you'll remember, the Coolidge Corner Theater had come to us in the spring. Um, looking to show Shutter Island and then obviously with COVID happening, they've had to push that date off. They have been carrying a date along for the last few months and they would like to know if the Board of Selectment would entertain September 6th. As a date that they could show that. Obviously, they have to wait until they're allowed, they're not allowed until phase four to be opening to be able to do something like this. So it all depends on whether or not they're authorized under phasing, but uh, they would like to post an additional date to kind of, they don't want to give the refunds on the tickets, basically. So if they can give another date, we can hold it out. So they wanted to know if you would entertain September 6th.
So they're not even allowed to do outdoor movies at this point?
No, um, drive-ins, yes. But, um, right now, having people gather in a recreational, uh, sense, Porta Pelta said no.
Is there, is there a place up there where the people could drive in and watch it? There's a lot of land.
We're, we're hoping actually that they'll be allowed in phase three, so by September 6th, I'm, I'm sure they'll be fine. So if you would entertain that date, uh, I will talk to John Thompson, but I don't believe in looking at the calendar that there was anything else on that date.
That's a, that's a Sunday night.
The Sunday, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
Okay. I can let them know. I, I mean, obviously they're, they've been fluid all along with us on moving their dates. So I will tell them if they want to move to that date, we can, we can work with them if there's anything else. So I will tell them if they want to move to that date, we can, we can work with them if there's anything else that comes up, or if they'd like to do an additional movie, we'd entertain it as well.
I just noticed that's late, that's the middle of Labor Day weekend.
Yes.
They want that?
They want that. I know, I thought the same thing.
Wow. They're counting on everybody being locked up for the next three months.
In that same vein, Memo has, uh, we've been working with Memo about bringing back the summer concerts up at the state hospital. Um, and they would be allowed, um, actually I believe it's in phase three, so I apologize, it's not phase four, they could do it, it's phase three. Um, and they're hoping to have one towards the end of July. Um, so we're going to hold that date, towards the end of July and allow them to do it up at the state hospital where they'd have a lot more space to open up versus the downtown. Um, and they'll work with all of the downtown restaurants, obviously, as Memo, to encourage people to get their takeout here before they head up to the state hospital. Um, so I'll keep you posted, uh, as soon as we have clearance to do that. So let you know, the Medfield Transfer Station, uh, will be ceasing operations on Sundays as of June 28th. We normally are only open in April. We've kept it open longer, uh, due to COVID to do some social distancing. Uh, the amount of people we're getting that utilize the station on Sunday has been dwindling, so we're going to close as of June 28th. Tomorrow is the last day to register for town meeting. Um, so if you have not done that, you can go to the Secretary of State's website and check to make sure you are still a registered voter. Most of our voters are registered since we just had our town election, but if anybody has moved into town in the last few weeks, you can go to the Secretary of State's office and register online.
So it's registering as a voter, it's not registering for the town meeting itself?
No, no, I'm sorry, registering, yeah, you need to be a registered voter.
I was picturing not being able to get in on Saturday morning because I hadn't done something somewhere. Okay.
Um, and then one other item actually, um, related to, uh, the state hospital was we had an issue with the old Mima building. Um, and we found, um, some used oil and some gas cans that had not been disposed of properly. So I had to authorize Clean Harbors, uh, in combination with the fire tube to go up there and clean all of that out of the property. It was about $4,300 and we'll take that out of the Medfield State Hospital revolving fund, uh, but it had to be removed, uh, immediately. Um, and I have some fantastic pictures if you'd like to see them.
What, Christine, was that, was that like old, old oil from when the state had it, or was that we were doing something silly up there?
Um, it's been our building for a while.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for, uh, COVID updates and a little bit of the town administrator updates as well.
Okay, thank you. Our next item on our list is, uh, the town meeting quorum vote that we've already done. And then after that is fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget.
So I left, I left that on there just in case we had anything, but the warrant report has gone to print and should be mailed to everybody's house, uh, on Wednesday or Thursday. So you should get that by Saturday. Um, the only other thing I need related to town meeting is I need you to vote to authorize to sign the warrant. And if it's okay due to timing wise, I will stamp your signatures on these prints because they need to be posted in the next couple of days.
I do have a couple of questions on the updated articles.
Sure.
So if you want to do that before, you want to vote on the warrant first or it wouldn't affect signing the warrant?
Nope, let's vote on that first because that's the most important tonight.
Okay, quick, uh, so a quick question for you. The one that came out in the, uh, in the package, if I go to article five, the prior version of the warrant articles on article five had about nine categories under the inspectors category.
Yes.
All but one of them went away.
Yes, in talking to, um, both Bob Conlon on the Personnel Board and Gary, our Building Commissioner, we haven't used those, uh, in the 20 years that I've been here. They were, when we used to pay stipends to our building inspectors, we no longer do that. We pay them per inspection. So we took it out and just left it as building inspection rate.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, um, it was the, uh, article eight, the, this guy, all I was doing was looking at what the last set of articles said and comparing them. Uh, article eight, which is the capital budget article, it was originally marked as two thirds, majority, two thirds vote required, then it disappeared on this one. Is that deliberate?
No.
Okay.
It is
Other questions?
It's a two thirds vote and it is in the warrant report, just not on this one.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine. I may have missed Gene's chart, but I sure went through this with the fine control. Okay. That's it.
Thanks, Gus. Do we have a motion then to?
I would move that we, uh, sign the warrant and authorize, uh, Christine Truittler to use our signature stamps to sign the warrant, um, since she apparently doesn't want us coming down to Town Hall to sign it, so.
You can come down right now, but it has to be done tonight.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Uh, this is an I.
Mr. Markucci, also an I.
So Chris, anything else you want on your update? I guess we're down to your town administrator update.
Nope, I actually incorporated a lot of that in my COVID update as well. Oh, actually, there's one other thing, just so you know, uh, a lot of the outdoor seating has opened at our restaurants. Uh, we've had some really creative proposals from some of our, um, businesses that don't have traditional green space next to their restaurants. Um, Sarah has been working with them and the state announced in the last couple of days, there will be some grant money available, uh, for streetscape improvements to allow some outdoor seating. So Sarah's investigating that with some of our other restaurants as well.
The, the town picnic tables look great, Chris.
Thank you.
For organizing those.
Chris, Chris, uh, you had said something out at one point about the Zula Gallery. Is that not on the table yet?
No, they're all set. And talking to the Board of Health, uh, they don't need any permission from us, so they will start, um, allowing people to, uh, rent the space, uh, and have dinner up there.
Okay. Did it, did they discuss my idea of putting the dumb, the, the horizontal dumb waiter from Avenue over there?
They absolutely loved your idea and they are investigating it.
So Selectmen's reports then, Mr. Markucci.
I don't believe I have one this evening, Mr. Peterson. I will defer.
Mr. Murby?
I don't have anything, uh, there's one, there's one, only, I, and I'm not, didn't really prepare this, but it, it, when we first started this crisis, we brought in the Medfield Foundation and, and we had different people that were doing different things that we were kind of recognizing. And the one group that we haven't recognized, not that they needed our help or anything, but the one group that's been working, uh, throughout this, that I just thought we should recognize in a meeting like this is the group that's been working, the, the volunteers across the town that have been working on putting masks and other things together. Uh, I, I saw a report that came out like a week and a half ago and off the top of my head, the masks, it was either 6,000, I think it was 6,000 plus masks and plus other equipment besides that. So, uh, I just simply didn't want to, I, I, I thought we shouldn't gloss over an awful lot of hard work that's been done on an informal basis, uh, by some people here in town. And it just so happened that I read an article that apparently there's been this kind of grassroots activity in a lot of towns in response to COVID crisis. So, uh, just a, a shout out to the group that's been diligently putting protective equipment together, especially when it looked like we didn't have enough in the main supply chains.
Medfield makes masks.
There you go.
3M. Anything else, Gus?
That's it.
So I would just follow up on your comment that, uh, I actually saw a letter that the Medfield Makes Mass sent to the Medfield Foundation today with a donation that they made to the Medfield Foundation. I guess they also made a donation to the Medfield Food Cupboard. And, uh, 5,000 masks was the number they used in their letter that they had made. So congratulations to them and, uh, and thank you from the Medfield Foundation for, for the donation. I, I went to the Medfield Cares About Protection, uh, meeting, uh, this week and, uh, met our new substance abuse, uh, employee, uh, Mary Haas, and, and I think that she's going to be very good for the town. Judging from talking to her for an hour in a meeting, in a Zoom meeting. So I think that, uh, that's going to work out really well. Medfield Energy Committee's meeting tomorrow night and Fred Davis has everybody working hard to, uh, make some improvements for, uh, for the high school. They're working to, uh, get the Green Communities Act grant application, and I think is what Fred's working on hard, but I know that he's been working hard on the, the controls at the Medfield High School in the, in the last day or two. And that's it for me. Anything else then, Chris?
No, I have nothing else formal tonight.
Motion to adjourn then.
I will move that we adjourn. I assume we're meeting again next Tuesday?
We are meeting next Tuesday and I think after town meeting, we can probably go to our summer schedule and meet a little less often.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, take care.